Please note that all commissioners are present except Commissioner Mercado. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Seeing none, I will move ahead. Tonight's meeting procedures are as follows. We'll have two public hearings. The first will be a study session for the high-density residential development on a vacant lot on Las Gamos Drive. The Planning Commission will not be making any decisions tonight on this proposal, but this evening will provide some very preliminary feedback to the applicant on a number of aspects of this project. The second hearing will be the annual meeting of the Planning Commission. For the first public hearing on Las Gamos Drive, we will begin with the staff report, then hear a presentation from the applicant, and then members of the public will be invited to speak. We will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the committee for discussion and resolution. The annual meeting of the Planning Commission will start with a staff report. Members of the public again will be invited to speak if they choose so prior to commission discussion. And the commission will always have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, the applicant, and the public following their presentations. Before we continue our agenda, does anyone have any items of an urgent nature that are not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, let's move on to the consent calendar. The only item is the approval of the minutes from our meeting of December 10th. Are there any changes to these minutes?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second on approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. I will now open the public hearing for the proposed high-density residential development on a vacant lot on Las Gamos Drive. Would staff present their report at this time?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Lockren. I'll start with just kind of discussing what the point of tonight is. We have been doing the pre-application study sessions for the last couple of years, and it's an opportunity for the commission to provide the applicant some feedback and also the public to provide the applicant with feedback on their anticipated project. This is a, you know, general feedback for this particular project. There's, it's important to state that there's no, this is not a binding decision. There's no decision, there's no action by the Planning Commission that's expected. The pre-application session, study session is kind of an offshoot of the conceptual design review that we started doing about 10, in 2010, about 10 years ago. And it's worked for the Design Review Board to provide early feedback on design. But this is more of a policy discussion, like the big-picture discussion of what the applicant is proposing and some items that they need to think about as they move forward, if they move forward with a formal application. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a really brief description of the project and let the applicant provide with, provide you with a more detailed description. The application is for a 180-unit multi-family development project. It also includes a retail building and a community building. The application also would provide open space, but with the buildings clustered towards the east part of the project site and the open space around, the private open space area surrounding the development adjacent to what's existing public open space. The project entitlements will require a general plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and environmental and design review. The general plan amendment will, proposal would switch the general plan designation from the lowest density that we have on our, in our general plan to one of the, well, the highest density that we have in the general plan. So that's one of the topics that we're asking the Planning Commission to weigh in on. The zoning map amendment that would be, that the applicant is proposing is a PD, a Planned Development designation. And the reason for that is that our general plan requires a PD designation for anything that's over five acres. And this would allow the applicant more flexibility in the design, the siding specifically trying to avoid some of the resource areas, conserving more open space, clustering the development towards a specific site that is less sensitive. And that's what the PD designation is intended to be, provides flexibility in setbacks, that sort of thing. So really quickly, a graphic elevation of what the applicant is proposing, but again, this is more focused on the policy discussion and not so much on the design. This is just a representation of what the applicant is proposing. It is a 50-unit structure that they're proposing at this time, which will require either a general plan amendment to our height exhibits or a request for a concession. And this is another graphic representation of the development. So focusing on what we're asking of the commission tonight, as I mentioned earlier, this is intense, a dramatic change in density. Right now, we, the site is zoned or has a general plan designation that allows .1 to .5 units per acre, which allows a maximum of five units on this property. And the proposal would, would be to change the general plan land use designation to one that would allow the high-density residential, which would be a 15 to 32 unit per acre. This would represent a maximum of 349 units. The general plan designation would also have to allow the commercial, the retail market that is being proposed on the project site. So the applicant's kind of trying to figure out what that, what that request will be. Looks like there are a couple of designations, land use designations that could fit into, that this project could fit into. Right now, they're looking at residential office as a possibility that would allow both the residential component at a density of 15 to 32 units per acre, and it would also allow the retail store. And just another component of that intensity is the height. Right now, the maximum height allowable for this project, for this site is 36 feet, and the applicant is proposing up to 50 feet. So that would, again, require either an amendment to our general plan exhibits to allow the 50-foot height or, or a request for concessions. And that would, if there's a request for concessions, one of the things that we're requiring because of this height increase would be to submit a pro forma, similar to what you saw with 703 Third Street. The other thing I would say with this is the 50-foot height that the applicant is showing, it's not, to me, it's not clear whether that is using the hillside. It doesn't look like it's using the hillside definition. So there's, that's something that the applicant will have to figure out, whether they're actually at 50 feet. To me, it seems like it's going to be lower than that based on our definition of hillside height measurements. The other area that we're asking the Planning Commission to provide comment on is the fact that the project site is adjacent to open space and that the general plan identifies this project site as an open, a potential open space site. And, you know, one of the questions is, is the applicant doing enough to, to recognize that fact? They are proposing to cluster the development closer to the Las Gamos Street. That opens up an opportunity to provide that private open space on their property, which they're providing. There's also a number of walking paths throughout the property that potentially could connect to the open space behind. So we're asking the Planning Commission to provide feedback on that. And then a connected element of that is the fact that this is a hillside lot. It's over 30 percent slope. There are some design elements that they're going to have to incorporate into their project design when they do, when they are ready for that. If there are areas where the Planning Commission feels the applicant really needs to think about as they come in for their formal application, you know, that this would be a good, a good thing for them to, a good time for that conversation to occur. And then finally, just identifying that there, we have several general plan policies related to housing and, and the fact that we need to comply with our regional housing, needs obligation for housing within the city. Our current cycle obligation is 1,007 units, and that represents 125 units per year on average. So far, we have approved or constructed 402 units, which represents 80 units per year. And so we're not, we're not meeting our obligation. And so this would contribute more housing towards meeting that need. The other thing I wanted to point out is that there are several housing legislation bills that have been both passed or are in the, in the works that would, that are taking control, taking away the local jurisdiction's control over how we, what our authority is over these projects. And meeting our obligation would allow us more control over development proposals. So that's something for the Planning Commission to weigh in on, and, and we would, are asking the Planning Commission for feedback on that. So there are some pros and cons to the proposed development. And again, we're asking the commission for big-picture discussion items, no commitment. This isn't a binding, you know, we're not sending the applicant away with a binding decision, but just kind of some things to think about. Some of the pros that we've identified include the fact that this is a multi-family housing that could add additional rental housing units to our, to the city and therefore getting us closer to meeting our RENA numbers. And then the fact that there's, that adding this, the housing and meeting the RENA numbers would then allow us more control over the review process within the city versus having to give the control over to the by right process like what you see with SB 35. So some of the cons are that this is a highly visible hillside. It's been open, it's been basically open and undeveloped for a number of years and identified as a potential open space site since 1988. There are a number of unknowns, like we don't know what the traffic impact will be. We aren't clear, the application isn't clear where, how the access is, the access rights have, where the access rights are. We still need to get, have that identified. We don't know what the legality of these lots are. They, looks like they showed up in the late 70s, but we need to figure out whether that, the lots were created legally or not. And then we have a lot of unknowns in terms of environmental impacts, and those will all be done through the normal application process. But again, we're asking the commission to provide some feedback on what the big-picture items are. And again, to identify, to help you understand what we're asking for in terms of feedback, provide feedback on the intensity of the development, on height, on hillside development issues, if there are any elements that the applicant should consider at this time, the fact that the project is adjacent to open space and has been identified as an open space site, and whether the applicant has done enough to, to address that. And then just, just where we are with housing, with our housing needs status and whether that is anything that you want to share with the, anything that you want to give the applicant in terms of that, feedback on that. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will allow the applicant to give you the bigger picture understanding of the site plan and design.
Are there any questions of staff at this time?
I have one. The numbers you gave us for the 1,007-unit obligation and the averages, is that, how many years is, does that include? You, you mentioned an average on both. How many were built? 402, since when?
Since 2015.
Okay. Thank you. Could you go back to the visual simulation of the, I just want to see it.
Are there other questions?
Madam Chair, at this point, I'd like to make a couple disclosures. First, I'm a retired lawyer, and I practiced law in San Rafael for 25 years. And sometime in the distant past, I did represent First California Mortgage Company in litigation wholly unrelated to any kind of development in, in this project in particulars. I don't think it affects my ability to consider the project and render fair and objective decisions or offer comments at this, at this point, since we're not making a decision. The other thing I'd like to disclose is the ex-party communications that I've had prior to tonight's meeting. And I recognize that we're not taking any decisions this evening, but we are going to be giving guidance to the applicant. And to the extent that the guidance that's provided from the day of, this evening ends up being part of some approval down the, down, down the road, I think it's only fair that the applicant be aware of the information that commissioners have considered that it was not part of the staff package. So with that in mind, I did read both the Marin Independent Journal newspaper article reporting on the project. I think that was a couple of weeks ago, and I think last Sunday, there was a, an editorial piece, an opinion piece in the Marin Independent Journal, which spoke favorably about the project. I did read that. I did a site, or a partial site inspection with a staff member yesterday, walking the sidewalk that borders the eastern side of the property from approximately the location of the YMCA down to near the entrance to the 1401 Las Gamos property, and had an opportunity to view the, the hillside and some of the physical features on, on the site. And finally, because the staff report and the site inspection did, did reveal that there is open space adjacent to the property, I consulted with an app I have on my phone that I use for hiking purposes called All Trails to determine whether there were any trails identified on this particular property on that particular application. I didn't find, find any. That's actually one of my questions tonight, but that's, I want to make those disclosures before the applicant has an opportunity to speak.
Any other questions of staff?
Just to really follow up on the prior question, the, the counting period in terms of the number of units when they need to be built, that goes from 2015 to 2025? Is that a 10-year period?
2015 to 2023.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eight-year period?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. If the applicant would now make their presentation?
Hello. My name is Chris Hart. My family and I are the developers of the site. Thank you for holding the study session to hear our request for zoning change. And I hope that you come away knowing that this is a resource for the city and the community, a resource of a developer, a resource of an underutilized parcel of land, a resource of a local team, and a resource of an opportunity. I'm a lifelong resident of San Rafael. As a family, we are celebrating our 82nd year in San Rafael. My wife and I have chosen to live and raise our three children here. In addition to building the office building at 1401 Las Gamos Drive and giving a fee simple two-foot strip of land across the southern portion of that site to our neighbors, the San Rafael Manor, we have built a couple of projects and own those for more than 20 years. And we have financed an additional 20 developments within Marin. Real estate is what we know. It's our passion. Living in San Rafael, we are particularly concerned with how redevelopment is going to happen and the housing product that is going to be produced. I have spent the last 18 months attending city council meetings, planning commission meetings, design review meetings, 2040 general plan meetings and charades, and city staff meetings, and a lot of individual meetings with housing advocates and housing opponents. I've spent those 18 months listening to both the concerns and to the desires. Our focus going forward is on San Rafael. We want to bring our expertise, our responsiveness, our thoughtfulness, and our ability to execute on projects within the community that we live. What this site provides is the opportunity to put the correct type of housing on the right site. We want to create a sense of place on Las Gamos Drive. We want to create the neighborhood at Las Gamos. With that, I will turn this over to Riley Hurd, and I thank you, commissioners.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Riley Hurd. I'm also part of the applicant team. Tonight, we're eager to get your feedback on the high level, the general plan amendment and the zoning changes being requested. We did bring a conceptual project to demonstrate what we could accomplish if we got these changes, but we're aware that things like architecture and colors would be discussed later if a formal application were to be submitted. But because the detail that's required for such an application is so time-consuming and so expensive to produce, we thought it would be best to come in early and get your input before embarking on a full-blown project. So housing and the lack thereof is a hot topic. As we heard just a week ago, the Marin IJ editorial board noted that this site was a test for city leaders and that it should be given thoughtful and thorough consideration. That's something that I've always experienced in this room, but I thought the article was pretty telling. So at this stage, it's a policy question for your commission. Should one of the last undeveloped freeway-adjacent sites that's zoned for a limited number of estate homes instead be better utilized to provide housing in a manner that we have found can respect the steeper and more visible areas of the site? So your direction in this regard will help guide any future application that we may make. Little bit about the zoning history. This site is nearly 11 acres. It's bounded by a freeway, an office building, the YMCA, a residential subdivision, and an open space parcel. The current zoning is a mix. It's PD and R2A, and each of those have the hillside overlay applied to them. Now, this overlay was created in 1992, and it was a blanket approach. Any site over 25 percent in slope, automatically applied. There was no site-by-site analysis that took place. But now, the team here has done a site-specific analysis, and it revealed that there was a project that would work on the lower portion of the site, leaving the upper part untouched. And it was because of that that we decided to request to remove the hillside overlay. Now, because most of the H sites were already developed at the time it was created in 92, this is actually one of the last unbuilt H properties in San Rafael. So it's not as if we're talking about a precedential effect that would open the floodgates of hillside development. There just aren't any left for that to occur. So this is the request. To accomplish what I call a medium-density project here would necessitate a general plan designation of your 15 to 32 unit per acre range, and also one that allows the onsite amenities like the market and the coffee shop. An example would be residential office, which allows both and is 15 to 32. Now, the concept project's at the very low end of that range, but that's the one you have in your general plan. The rezoning request simply changes the whole property to PD. Right now, the large part is PD and the small parts are 2A. This would just make it all PD, and what that does is gives you the ability to craft site-specific development standards, your setbacks, heights, property coverages, that allow you to cluster development down at the bottom. So why here? And the, the answer is, this site has a ton of potential. Housing near jobs is the key to traffic reduction, and this site is right next to the big employers, Kaiser, County of Marin, even have the YMCA across the street. Critically, it's also near major transit routes. There's a high-frequency bus stop just a third of a mile away. So as a reminder, the site is already zoned for development, but that would look like five estate-style homes, and that seems like a waste of an opportunity. There simply aren't any more decent-sized undeveloped parcels near the 101 corridor, near the jobs, that haven't been built yet. So given that this project can be accomplished in a way that respects the topography, it seemed to make more sense, instead of five mansions, to try the concept project, especially where we are as a city and a state in regards to housing. So what the project team did was a detailed constraints analysis. They looked at the slopes, the visibility, the natural resources, and the nearby receptors. This revealed that approximately 16.5 units per acre was the number that fit. It showed that a height of three stories reduced visibility, so that's why you're seeing the three-story proposal, and that the onsite market and community rooms would limit the potential traffic impacts that may occur. Here's a look at a vicinity map. This shows the opportunities. You can see the freeway access, the bus stops, the employers, and the clustering. And by keeping it up here, you're able to leave a very large buffer here between the only residential neighbor, which is quite some distance away down there. So when we drew up the project, there were four objectives. First, and probably the most obvious, address the need for housing. Second, and this one is a little more refined and one you don't hear as much, it was to be sure the housing was targeted at the workforce. The third was to reduce traffic and establish a sense of place, a pocket neighborhood concept. And the fourth was preserving the upper areas of the site and enhancing connectivity to the open space. So here's what that looks like. In regards to the first objective, the need for housing has been discussed ad nauseam. We've seen the headlines. You've seen the headlines. I referenced the editorial, and it seemed like medium-density was the way to respond to some of these. The city council has been having a whole series of meetings about how to facilitate housing in this city. Why isn't it happening, is what they've been asking, and this application's a direct response. And there are only a few years left in your RENA cycle, and the numbers, you know, you need more if you're going to take advantage of the local control elements for compliance. So this project responds to that. Objective two was the workforce housing. And here, it's really about the typology of the development when you respond to the need, and that's because the higher end is very well-served in Marin, but workforce housing is missing. And at 16 and a half units per acre, you could do a project that's affordable by design. What we mean by that is market rate units that are still relatively affordable due to their size. So the concept project has 500, 700, and only up to 900 square-foot units. These are very small, and employers like College of Marin, the Buck Institute, Kaiser, the Y, they cannot house their employees in multimillion-dollar homes. In addition to the affordability by design, the project, as currently designed, would provide 36 deed-restricted low-income units. Objective three is the pocket neighborhood concept with minimal traffic. So this is where having the local market onsite and the amenities is important, but it's really about the traffic. It's the number-one opposition to any development. We've all heard it here and other places, but what's unique about this is its circulation pattern. Because of its location, not one car going to the freeway to or from this development would pass another single home. You saw it on the map. There are no sites I can think of where you can build it out, and when you drive to the freeway, you don't pass another house. So that is, I think, a really big, big factor here. It's near the bus stop. You can walk to the Y, and the market would be onsite. Objective four, it's pretty important. This was to enhance the open space nearby, and to do this, we've got the clustering. We showed you the southern portion, I call it, remaining open. I think it's important to note out, to note that the city has stated with certainty it will not be purchasing any more open space. It's a It's expensive. It's a liability. It's expensive to maintain. This is not zoned as open space, and it apparently will not be purchased as open space. But what the plan does do is enhance the access to the open space nearby, and we'll show you the trail system and the connectivity that's proposed, right here. So, this image shows a couple of things. First, it shows the clustering of the buildings down in this area over here. It shows a newly-proposed recreation area that would go over here, and the network of trails that would be installed throughout the property and then designed to connect to and enhance the open space above. And I'm told that already the YMCA is interested in perhaps programming some fitness courses through these trails. So, the project both preserves and enhances open space. This image has to do with ridges and how far the property, which is outlined in orange, is from any mapped ridge in the city's GIS database. So, this line right here is the closest map ridge. This is the project site, and this is way beyond the 300-foot horizontal, 100-foot vertical standard that's often used to determine if something is near a ridgeline. And again, this is the city's data. So, we're pretty excited about what the project has to offer. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the architect, Colin Russell. He's going to tell you about the process that led to this design, and that will be very brief. Thank you.
Good evening. See a couple familiar faces here. Nice to see you. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm an architect who has been working in Marin County since 1980. I've designed hundreds of, hundreds of single-family and multifamily dwelling units throughout Marin and actually the whole Bay Area. There's a list that includes, the final four here are all topographically challenged. They're all on hillsides, except for Cape Marin. I'm sorry, that's the middle one, which had its own challenges with soils. So, I'm familiar with hillside design, and I know the challenges that it, that it, that it offers. I've also been an affordable housing advocate for 25 years. I was the Chair of the Santa Fel Chamber Affordable Housing Committee. I was a MECC Board Member for several years. So, I know this area well, and I know that this development that we're proposing fits the site. So, a little bit of the history, as you've already heard, the family acquired the 10.92 acre site in 1986. It was originally zoned for an automobile sale, sales lot. The family assembled a local development team, and in January of last year, we began site analysis in earnest to determine the most appropriate use of the resource. We've had many meetings and planning sessions with the key stakeholders over that, over that last 12 months. And in August of last year, we submitted an initial plan for review that was quite different from what you see tonight. We had 10 single-loaded buildings, and what I mean by that is all the units were facing east. There were no units on the western side of the buildings, which, of course, took advantages of views, but it also meant more buildings. It was 185 units. There was a combination of three and four stories to achieve that number, and we utilized most of the developmental area of the site to achieve that number. We got feedback from the planning commission in August, and they had concerns about the number of buildings, the height and site covered, coverage, and the cluster, and called for clustering of buildings to retain visible hillside resources. So, we went back to the drawing board, and in response revised the plan to address the concerns. We cut the building count by half to five buildings, and the way we did that was to double-load the corridors so that each building had units facing both ways. We clustered all the buildings toward the lower part of the site. We left that large southern parcel undeveloped, and it will be devoted to recreational pursuits. We reduced all the buildings to three stories, reduced the overall site coverage, reduced the floor-area ratio by this double-loaded scheme, and reduced the unit count. In the process, all the setbacks on the site were increased dramatically. This is basically an aerial view of the vicinity, our site. What's the pointer? That's what I thought. Can't see it. Oh, okay. Well, center of the site there shows the development just behind 1401 Los Camos. The white roof to the right is the YMCA, and the residential areas are to the left. So, as you can see, it's, it sits low on the site. The ridge is far above it. I want to go to the next slide, which shows actually a simulation of the property line. As you can see, it actually does not cover more than two-thirds of the site. The large area to the left is the undeveloped part, and the ridge is far above. So, this pretty much sums it up. The proposal offers a rare opportunity to develop new workforce housing along 101 corridor, 16 and a half acres per, units per acre. It sits low on the site. It's close to transit. It responds to our housing crisis, which is real. It establishes a thoughtful neighborhood vision. It's environmentally sensitive, and it provides the city with new tax revenue and fee income. And if it's approved, it will be built now. I also wanted to say about the height, we measured it, from what I understood, the hillside guidelines require that you go to the highest point of a building from adjacent natural grade, and that is what we have provided. However, that height is measured to the ridge of the gable ends of the buildings, and the predominant level of the buildings is about six or so feet lower than that. So, in other words, you have a flat building with ridges occurring at intervals, and that's where we measured from, the highest point, if that makes any sense. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions of the applicant at this time?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, I know, I understand this is just a rough approximation of the project. I get that. Do you plan the road, I couldn't really tell, to be two-way or one-way? So, two-way? Is there a reason why you wouldn't, why you wouldn't put the market down lower on Los Camos so it might be more accessible without people having to drive through the development?
We don't have access to Los Camos. If you look at the property line there, it's setback substantially from the road. That portion to the east of our site, between our site and the road, is actually owned by the county. We have approached them, or the owner has approached them, to try to purchase that, but the county is not interested in selling it, and so the only way we can get to that property... Yeah. Okay. The only way we can get to our property is this, as you can see, that vertical perpendicular road to Los Camos, which takes you up to our property line, and then the topography of the, of the site is such that you have to start getting up. You have to start achieving elevation to get to the upper units. Yeah, that's great. Oops. Sorry. What happened? Am I going the wrong way? Sorry about that. There we go. Okay, let's try this again. So, oh boy. No, this is not working. Sorry. Yes, a little easement. So, that's the only easement that this, that this property can be accessed from, which is why it's where it is. And it's actually going up, uphill, and then you have to reach elevations to the, to get to the upper units. And so, in order to keep those buildings down low, we had to kind of hug the property line, as you see there, which left not, originally, we actually had it between buildings, we'll call it, three and four, but that stretched out that lower, that lower row. So, that pushed it into the undeveloped part of the site. We wanted to stay out of that, and the, the most appropriate place for it was then, therefore, on the upper part of the loop.
Right. I would, I would suggest you find some way to make it at the, where the access comes in. You're going to have people from Kaiser, from the Sheriff's Department, from where, down the street, who are going to be, I would hope, I'm guessing you hope, utilize that market. And so, I mean, I'm just, it would make sense, they wouldn't have to drive through the whole complex just to get to there. I'm thinking of, if you're aware of the development in Corder Madera, where they have an Andy's Market, which is right, right in the front, right on the corner, and it seems like that would be more appropriate setting for the market. Just, I mean, if it's, if it's possible.
You can certainly look at that, yes.
Yeah, that's all. Let's see. I like what you've done with incorporating the open space. So, this project, I mean, if, if we're to go forward as proposed, you're okay with 100 unit, 180 units? That's what we're talking about right now?
Right.
I know you can have up to 300 and, what is, 349, but you're requesting with the density.
That's correct.
Okay. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question. What was the access you were trying to get from the county? What was the location?
It's this piece right here. Would have made our, our job much, much easier, but the county's not willing to sell.
Other questions?
I've got a couple. So, and maybe Mr. Hurd wants to come up to the podium and be there with you, Colin, so you can stick around just, just in case. So, who owns the servient tenement for that easement? And is that a deeded easement?
Yes, it's an express easement, deeded, that was reserved at the time that the owners and the applicants of this parcel sold this parcel.
Okay. Could you go back, Mr. Hurd, to the slide you had up there that had the topographical map on it, please?
The ridge?
Ridge line, the ridge line map, yeah. And what are those, what's the scale on those, on those lines, those intervals?
Twenty-foot contours.
Okay, so, the height of the, so, the yellow line that shows the outline, that's the footprint of the building, how far up the hill does that move if you want to show the extent that, you know, the evenness with the, with the edge of the...
Hold on, hold on.
That's the property line? Okay.
Let me walk you through this. This is the parcel shape. The development is proposed way down here.
Okay.
And the mapped ridge is way in the background, according to the GIS.
Okay. But I still, my question is, you know, how far, how high does the building go on that, on that slope? Because we can't tell from this, this represent, this representation.
Right. So, we did speak with our project engineer to ensure that even the tops of the roofs didn't go into the 300-foot horizontal, 100-foot vertical distance from the ridge, and that was confirmed. So, I know that it's at least that far away, but I believe it to be much further. If you look at the contour lines and think of being here, and if, even at 50 feet, you, that's 20, that's 40, now you're at 60 here, 80, 100, I mean, there were hundreds of vertical feet.
Right. That's the explanation, and I want to thank you. That's good. So, to my question earlier, before we started it, what is the status of public walking trails or paths in the surrounding open space? And am I correct that, that to the west, that is county, either open space or county property?
My understanding is it's city open space, and that would be the parcel right here.
Yes.
Frankly, our, our understanding is that it's not heavily utilized in any way, really, as open space. And so, one of the plans here was to develop some connectivity. I think one of the reasons it's not used so much is there isn't really a way to get there from Los Camos to it. So, the idea was, maybe there's some interpretive signage and trail development that gets you up there, and then we can work with the open space district to try to get this resource utilized.
Right. Because there was a question in the staff report about the effect on views from the open space onto the, onto the project. So, it was unclear in my mind who's, if there are currently people looking from the open space onto the, onto, onto the site, and I...
I tried to find a way up there and couldn't, so I don't know if any folks are making their way in there or not.
Okay. Another question I had was with respect to the property at 1401, which is at the end, which is at the end of the, the northern section of Los Camos, there is, at the end of the parking lot, there are three bollards that prevent vehicular access, but apparently permit bicycle and pedestrian access between the terminus, the, the northern terminus or the southern end of, of Los Camos and that parking lot. Is, is there, what, what kind of rights does the public have to pass through that parking lot to, from one end of Los Camos to the other?
I have not analyzed the easement rights over 1401. I do know that there is no vehicular travel, which is why the, in terms of freeway, no cars from this project pass any other homes, but that's something we could certainly look into.
Because I'm asking a question in terms of access to public transportation and, because there is citation to the availability of public transportation at the corner of, I think, Los Camos and Freitas Parkway, that's, that's, is that the one that's identified as .4 miles distant?
The Lucas Valley one is .4, and then the .3, yeah, like you're saying, is you can, you would come out here, and it's right there.
So, the, okay, so the, the Freitas one is .3, and Lucas Valley is, is .4, or is it the other way, other way around? I thought, I thought I read it the other way around.
I believe it's the other way around.
Okay. And then with respect to the, I think you spoke earlier about public, public transit with frequent service, high-frequency buses? Do you have any more details on that? What, what, what buses are those? Where, where's, where's the stop? Is that the Marin Transit Agency, or is it Golden Gate Transit, or is it a combination of, of the two?
I don't have the schedules with me, but I can tell you that personally, I have attempted to research the definition of a high-frequency transit stop, and there is not one that's been provided, and it, it is a very relevant term in regards to some of the state housing laws that have been passed, because proximity to high-frequency or high-quality transit lines, at least in some of the bills that are being proposed, really can take away some local control. So, I don't know the answer to that, but we'll, we'll look into the frequency to talk about the quality of what this is close to.
Okay. Because I, I think you told us that there was high-frequency bus service there, and there's, and that was to the, to the bus pad at, at 101?
So, the high-frequency was just from looking on the website and saying, does this come more than once in the morning and once at night? What your definition is, it may be different, but it seemed to have regular buses coming through. They go down to the transit center. Some of them were express, some of them were down to the transit center. We could provide you with those schedules.
And that, in my mind, that could potentially change when Kaiser is going full force and, and has a larger patient population to serve.
Yeah, the demand change could affect the scheduling.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few questions. We were given a presentation on RENA. It's probably a number of years ago now, and yes, there are kind of quotas that aren't quotas, as I think that's how it was explained to us, and, and RENA actually, it's not...
Yeah, the demand change could affect the scheduling.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any-
Yeah, I have a, a few questions. Uh, we were given a presentation on RENA. It's probably a number of years ago now, and yes, there are kind of, uh, quotas that aren't quotas, uh, as I think, that's how it was explained to us. Uh, and, and RENA actually, it, it's not just a blanket number of, you know, you, you should have this many units. It's sliced a little more thinly than that, in that there are designated, you know, units for different, um, segments of, of, uh, income, income level. And I'm wondering if you could speak to, I mean, if, if you have any knowledge about that, and how, how this would fit in with, with the RENA numbers, and given the kind of the income level that you're looking at for this project. And I say that specifically because, as I recall, um, frankly, it was surprising, if not shocking, that the RENA numbers that we were supposed to meet here in Santa Fe were all kind of generally focused on, like, higher income levels, which seems ironic and odd, but, um, I'm wondering if you could speak to that.
Sure, so first of all, you are correct, the RENA has not shifted to a mandated production model yet. They just go one step closer and closer to that every time. Um, I don't know if you recall, but it used to be, all you had to do is zone for it. And if nobody built it, oh, well. And then they realized that, um, perhaps some of the zonings weren't, um, were a little disingenuous in terms of their likelihood of being built, and so that's why they're moving towards a production model, but not yet. And it's split between very low, low, and moderate, or the production categories, and market rate. A lot of people are unaware that RENA has a market rate category as well. We just usually do, um, pretty well, uh, in that department around this county. But, yeah, I mean, the AMI numbers that are associated with some of those would shock people in other parts of the country. A hundred and ten thousand, and, and you're low income. Uh, so, uh, in regards to these particular units, it's gonna be the unit sizes that drive this. So a five-hundred-square-foot unit can only rent for so much. And that's the affordability-by-design concept. The deed restrictions there, your ordinance requires twenty percent, you're gonna get twenty percent, those are deed restricted. But the, the question of what will the others rent for, um, I've noticed now, it's just a question of, how long does it take to get approved and built, and what's the rent at the time? You know, some of these things, just going for years, and years and years.
Great, thank you. Uh, second, a, a continuing concern of, of mine and of a number of members of the Planning Commission is, is, um, over and over in different projects, the, the concern about bulk and mass, especially as viewed from places like a freeway. Uh, I'm wondering if, um, if there would be a way to reduce the bulk and mass by perhaps, uh, with, could there be more first-story level units with less of a set, or, you know, with fewer stories and more kind of, you know, kind of bringing the units down a little bit?
Yeah, so-
Is that, is that in the, is that a little bit too in the weeds at this point, or, or?
I don't think so. I, I don't think so. So first of all, this project, um, even without the H overlay, would still have to comply with the hillside design guidelines. Um, so the DRB is gonna be pushing pretty hard, I, I think, on the stepped nature, bulk and mass, colors, articulation, fenestration. But, I mean, the first time I was presented with the concept for this site, I think I said something right along the lines of what you are, which is, maybe, it's all about design, you know? Right now, we have a little more than the blocks that you see in a master plan process and a concept design level. But to answer your question, I think there are a lot of tools that could be implemented, and we just didn't wanna start having Mr. Russell, uh, really put pencil to paper if the city was gonna say, we're not interested in anything like this here. Uh, because then it's, be a lost cause, but I think he could probably answer that better than me.
Yeah, um, one of the challenges of hillside design is that, uh, the two challenges. One, we've gotta find a place to put, to put the cars. Cars are all going underneath the buildings, except for that strip you see on the upper level, which is for surface, and there's a few surface cars down below. So that was an objective, keep the cars out of sight. That, by necessity, raises the floor of the first floor to at least a story above grade. The other problem is that with a hillside like that, if you've got a story of parking, and then your first unit, the hillside keeps going up, where do you put the unit on the upper side, on the other side of the building? That actually gets, if you keep it at the same level, gets built into the hill. So what we've done is we've shifted that second, that, that uphill side, upper story, to meet grade at the upper, at the upper part, or the, the eastern sides of the buildings. So all those units will be at grade. The units on the lower side will be necessar, necessarily, uh, a story above grade, so we can accommodate the parking. So that's a limitation. The other thing we've tried to do is, as you see, these are not straight buildings. They're, we've pushed and pulled all the unit, units, so that you have shadow lines. We've made, we've made units different colors from one to the next. So we've tried to break that mass up as much as possible. The elevation you saw at the very beginning is deceptive, because it only shows it as a big, flat mass. But if you look at the plan, you can see it's, units are being pushed, pulled, moved, so that it's not one big monolith.
Okay, and not, this isn't necessarily, you know, a recommendation, but a s- a suggestion to at least look into, you know, I, I, you're the, much more into the, how this design might look, but, um, just brainstorming here, what about, uh, you know, carports or something like that, um, that could again help with, with reducing possibly, um, building size?
So I actually thought about the carports myself, and what happens when you do, so we got the traditional balance here, right? First of all, parking out of view is highly desirable. Parking underground is super expensive. And then you have cut-and-fill versus visibility, how much off-haul, how much excavation. The carport issue, what that does is it drives the lot coverage way up, and it starts taking away the ability to offer up the very large buffer to the residential area over here, as well as the kind of the benefits that come with it. So we did look at the carports, it just started taking up so much of the site that the first crack at the concept was the integrated parking, uh, on, on grade. But it's something we'd, we'd definitely look at.
And then, uh, a last question. We've had a couple of other projects, at least, that have involved, um, paths at or near, um, open space, especially where there's wildlife. And, um, in the top, the issue that comes up then is lighting, lighting in the evening and at night. And that can affect mating patterns and habits, and it can affect wildlife. And, uh, again, we're a little bit ahead of ourselves perhaps, but I wanted to make sure that there's, that that's on the map, and if you have, if there's any comments about that.
Yeah, I'm doing a project adjacent to the GG NRA right now, and that's a critical issue, is the light spillover. And even though that park is open, uh, sunrise to sunset, there, I was reminded there are non-human users. Uh, and, uh, I believe the concept here is that this is a sunrise-to-sunset area, so it's not, not a lit pathway.
Other questions?
Yeah, right.
So can you elaborate a little more about your attempts to work with the county? Is, it, it would seem to me that a land swap, to keep that upper portion open, it's a no-brainer to me, but I don't know who you've talked to, or what, you don't take no for an answer on the first try.
That's great advice, um, and although I wasn't the exact person that was sent to communicate with the county's real property officer, I'm very familiar of how it went down. And it was less of a no and, and more of kind of a nonresponsiveness, despite multiple, multiple efforts. And to your point, nothing would make more sense than taking the access through here. Um, you can reduce grading, it's less steep, it changes the whole pattern. And we found there to be, you know, that, there would have been a nice benefit for the county for a piece of property that is completely unutilized. Um, I don't know if you know, but this, this land here goes way over here and connects, and is one huge county parcel. So this is just a little tail of a giant parcel. Um, and I, I know that we're gonna keep pressing, just because it would help.
Just piggybacking on Commissioner Lubrameski's, uh, comment, I would think it makes a lot more sense to have that store down along with the two other complexes.
Yeah, I agree.
If a land swap, especially leaving the open space. So my strongest recommendation to you is to get an answer. Have the conversation, I-
Yeah, I won't, um, bore you with the details, but it was quite frustrating, so we'll keep pushing.
The frustrating part was the non-responsive, not a conversation.
Yeah, no, yeah, there were multiple conversations in person, letters exchanged, um, but never really got to just, uh, substantive discussion.
Of the land swap?
Correct. We're, we're still working on it, though, because you guys are right.
I have one more, uh, question, and that's, if, if you can, um, give us a little bit of an understanding about the zoning history, because you touched on something earlier that was not in the staff report, about how this was in nineteen eighty-six. It was zoned for, uh, use as a auto sales lot. And then, from reading the staff report, it was my understanding that the current densities for the two parcels, uh, were imposed, or included in a general plan beginning in about nineteen eighty-eight. Do you, can you walk us through the, that, uh, the general plan history of the, uh, of the, of the two lots, if you can?
Sure, so what it all really dates back to is the approval of the office building at fourteen oh one. Um, it was a very drawn-out process, went on appeal to the city council. And the controversy at the time was the tax revenue associated with the potential car sales lot for what at the time was this, this was all one parcel at the time. Um, and the city was very desirous of receiving the sales tax revenue and having this become kind of a more of an auto roe type of, uh, scenario. And then the applicant on appeal to the council, uh, got the office use appro, approved as a, uh, as opposed to, I guess would be considered the retail auto sales use. And that was kind of the, the whole timing and discussion around the, the slide you saw that mentioned that this was gonna be a, a car dealership. Uh, but in terms of the general plan, uh, I went over the history of the H overlay, and that was nineteen eighty-two, but that was not site-specific. It was, was just for here. I mean, just for every lot, there was twenty-five percent or greater.
So do I, I understand that that nineteen eighty-two hillside overlay was what, um, created the, the, the current densities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. When you put that overlay on, it's a huge density reducer. And it didn't matter so much, because a lot of the places it was being applied to at the time were built-out subdivisions of single-family homes. And that was that. And then the rest were open-space parcels, actual ridge lines. If you look at the H overlay map, and we went through every property designated as H to be able to state that there was not, you know, the floodgate of development that was going to occur, because there just aren't any left. It's not surprising, though, I mean, Marin's pretty built out. Vacant lots are hard to find.
So you mentioned, uh, with, with reference to the affordable units, that, um, your approach, let me just make sure that I get this correct, is that instead of doing any kind of deed-restricted, um, limitations on, on, uh, I guess the rental price, is that you're using the square footage as sort of a natural, uh, I don't know what you call it, sort of natural limit on, on how much the, uh, the rent would cost?
Right, so simply put, no, that is not the plan. The plan is to provide the full twenty percent of deed-restricted and to do the small unit sizes.
Okay. So, uh, you had a few different, uh, unit sizes.
Yeah, those are the one, two, and three bedrooms.
Yeah, so are you saying that there's gonna be some allocation of, say, the three or two bedrooms that would also be below market in addition to?
Yeah, so the, um, affordability, the inclusionary ordinance requires that the twenty percent of the deed-restricted be distributed throughout, uh, the locations and the unit types. So, you know, some are ones, some are twos, some are threes.
Okay. Do you have a sense, uh, I mean, you're sticking to the twenty percent exactly, or do you think that it's gonna go over?
I believe the plan at this time is, is the twenty percent, uh, as the code requires. Um, the, you know, I think one of the reasons you don't see a lot of this product type is five-hundred and seven-hundred-square-foot units, um, you know, they don't rent for as much. And so, it's hard to, um, and I've seen the inclusionary ordinance kill a number of projects recently. It just doesn't pencil after you give twenty percent away. Um, and that's because of construction costs and entitlement costs and entitlement timelines. Um, I think that's probably what they've been talking about at the council.
Yeah, makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So when I look at the height of the buildings, one of the things that I'm trying to do is get some perspective. So if I'm driving south on one oh one, and I look towards these buildings, would they block my ridge line view?
No, it's, it's, that's not possible, um, at that location on the property. And, um, at least from many of the forty-five to ninety-degree angles and going this way, the office building, the YMCA, are gonna screen quite a bit of this here, but the ridge is way back. Um, I think that the first slide actually, uh, shows what you're asking about. Not really, because that's up in the air, but to answer your question, no.
Okay. Yeah, it's hard to get perspective, I mean, it, when you're looking at it on different pieces of paper. So that, that's helpful. Um, so clearly, because this is open space right now, you're, it's going to have some environmental impact to build this building, and, um, obviously, there's lots of steps that'll have to be addressed and studied to figure all of that out. But what are you now thinking in terms of how environmentally green and responsible you're going to be able to build these buildings?
Yeah, so that, that's a great question. Um, as someone who personally just completed my very first home construction project, complying with the new CalGreen standards, um, this state's building code, uh, you know, when people put up the big list of all the green stuff they're going to do? Most of that is in there now. Um, it, it, it is, you cannot do new construction that is not hyper-efficient compared to everything else, uh, throughout the county. So, A, we're already limited by that, because it's the building code, there's no way out. Um, B, and speaking with, you know, the owners, that's something that's really important to them, and I think you're gonna see a lot of extras, as I call them, thrown in. And also, we have a sequel review.
Mm-hmm.
This, you know, this is, this is, there will be an initial study, but, you know, I'm, I'm not seeing an exemption here.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Can you, can you indicate some of the ideas, what you're talking about, in terms of, as you said, obviously, there's, there's building codes and the efficiency of the building codes, but what would you do beyond that, or what have you considered doing beyond that?
So we got the passive design, we got solar as an idea, the electric car charging, uh, now they're going from, it used to have to be pre-wired, to just having stations. Then you have to have your bike parking, low E-class is another one. Um, HVAC, uh, that does two things, one is hyper-efficient, but, um, two is used as a noise mitigation, uh, because of the freeway adjacency. So you find yourselves having to use special windows, special HVAC, um, I don't know. Yeah, it, it's a very long, long list, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna open it up for public comment. If members of the public would like to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name and your address. Um, you will have up to three minutes each to speak. And when you're finished, please sign in at the register to your right. Go ahead, thanks.
Hi, good evening. Um, thank you all, uh, thank you for your time and the work you do. Um, I live on Los Gamos Road, and the first thing I wanna mention is that in one of the, the slides, it says Los Gamos Road. And I really want to start out by saying there's a difference between Los Gamos Road and Los Gamos Drive. Um, I've actually had sleepless nights in concern for what might be kind of a nightmare of our quality of life, if the easement between Los Gamos Drive and Los Gamos Road were to go away. Um, we have a lot of elderly people, we have, um, people who've lived on my street for, I, I went to high school there. I graduated in nineteen seventy-four. Um, I've lost my mother and my grandmother over the years, who lived there, my father. Um, and we have an elderly community, and we have a lot of children on our street. And it's a very narrow, very quiet street. Um, and so, losing that easement- it's a very narrow, very quiet street. And so, losing that easement would be, we'd like to actually get a commitment from the planning commission that we could, that that will stay. Okay. So, that's the first thing. So, that's the concern about Los Gamos Road versus Los Gamos Drive.
If you don't mind, I'm going to interrupt you just really quickly. And I, it's my understanding that that is not a part of this proposal. But, Alia, you might want to speak to that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I can definitely speak to that. We, so, the prior project that was approved on, for the office building, did identify, require an easement along that, that boundary between Los Gamos Road and Los Gamos Drive. So, the applicant would not only have to negotiate with the property owner at 1401 Los Gamos Drive, but also request planning commission and city council approval to eliminate the easement, and then proceed with a recording of that, or rescinding the recording of that.
And in response to that, I just want to say it would be a nightmare if traffic came from Freitas to go to Lucas Valley. And I don't think it would be necessary, frankly. So, I'll try and make this really quick. I took good notes. I just want to, in response to the hiking path, there is a path that goes up the hill. You can see it if you're at Los, if you're at the Y, you'll see that there's a path that goes up to the top. There's a lovely tree at the top. Yeah. I'm sorry. I was trying to speak to, to the planners and the architect, because you had asked about trails. Okay. Yes, of course. So, yeah, there is, there is a path that's there, and it is used. The traffic study, I would just ask for the record that the traffic study, because I know that the people that come from Lucas Valley have trouble getting on the freeway there. We also have, on the other side, on North Gate Drive, we've got this proposed large residency up there. So, traffic, I, I don't know how to say this, but if you don't live in Terre Linda, it is one of the highest freeway exits, or the highest populated freeway exits. I have gone up, I hike a lot myself, like Hugh Jeff, and I go up into the hills, and I have taken pictures, actually, of where the, where the clusters are. And it's around Lucas Valley and Freitas Parkway. And so, all of these building ideas and developments, I just would like you to take some thought about that. The other thing, really quickly, is parking. If there are 180 units, and some of them are three-bedroom, where are the other, because we know that some, that families, if it's a one-bedroom and there are two people in it, are going to have two cars. So, that's a concern. And also, affordable versus BMR, below-market rate, you know this, I work in housing, you know this, but below-market rate is very little under-market rate. Teachers, sheriffs, police people, people who run our stores, people who keep us safe in our community, they can't afford below-market rate. So, I just want to say that for the record. We need low-income housing in Marin. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Cecile Nielsen. I live in this area. And I'm here on behalf of my family and my neighbors. This development took us by surprise. We were just here addressing you guys about Kaiser and their proposal for putting in a parking garage, as you guys are very familiar with. Riley just stated that there are very few vacant lots. They're, vacant lots are really hard to find, he said. This is not a vacant lot. This is virgin territory. No, nothing's ever been built there. The Indians would come to this area, and it, they would find it a place for, to be protected from the wind. And the creek there would provide food for their families. A project this size does not belong there. This is a beautiful piece of property that we have here in Marin. And you, as the planning commission, are responsible to make sure that this is protected. As far as getting, needing more housing here in San Rafael, it is very important, but we should be putting those homes on top of other buildings, like other garages, parking lots, malls, where the North Cape Mall is. This will have a huge impact on wildlife, will be a traffic disaster, since there's only one way in. We have our own markets that will be impacted by them wanting to put a market there. Marinwood Market, Scotty's. The lighting, the dark sky in the open space will be gone and will affect habitat tremendously. And we are, they're talking about five three-story buildings. That is significant. If anything, this needs to be scaled down tremendously. So, I urge this planning commission to really look at this in-depth and think about your, the future, the future of our kids. And as you know, climate change has been a huge problem, and I hope you guys are taking that into account. Thank you.
Greetings, planning commission. I, my name is Pam Reeves, and I'm from San Rafael. I have a few things to have you think about. This site, this planning proposal could be a terrific idea. I, I don't really know, because there's so many unknowns. One- That was fast. One is that I have a feeling that the fire department will require more than one way in and one way out with a new development. Now, that makes it very tricky for what Lynn, the previous woman, just brought up, in that it will be a nightmare if, I don't live in her area, but it will be a nightmare if that easement is allowed to go through with traffic. And since the same owner owns 1401 as owns this proposal, that's my understanding of what he's... Oh, I thought he, okay. That, but there isn't anything to say that in the future, that the different planning commission, for different reasons, might be able to change that and allow, or might require it for, for that division, that proposal to go in for more than one way in and one way out. And the, there's an ephemeral creek there, as I've walked past, that I'm not sure what happens in a heavy rain. I'd really be concerned about the stability of the hillside. And I think mainly, my big concern is, is in the environment, is the runoff and the impenetrable surface that would be increased by having all this on a very steep hillside. And thank you for your time.
Hi there. My name's Dave Rhodes, and I'm a new homeowner at San Rafael, so I'm really excited to be here for my first planning commission meeting. And I just wanted to say that I'd like to express my just general support of more housing in, in the, in the city and in the county. I think that this is a great start to a great discussion around this particular site. I think it's really interesting to see how this particular proposal is trying to concentrate the development on one portion of the property. And I think that's something to be really thoughtfully considered in, in their ability to, to make this thing something that can be a well-thoughtful development. So, and I also really appreciate the fact that there's a lot of open space that is preserved. And I think that's something to consider for the, the process moving forward. One of the things that I really appreciate about it is, or that I would recommend, is thinking about, a little bit more about bike charging and the bike infrastructure. I think that one, a lot of people are concerned around traffic, and I think that that's a, the only way to, to address that is, like we've talked about previously, jobs near housing, and also alternative transportation options. You know, there's, I think electric car, electric bikes is a really great way to get people out of cars, do small, shorter trips, get to the market, get to the other places in Terre Linda via bikes rather than cars. That'll get cars off the road and get people to move around in a little bit more effective manner. So, consider that as part of the new, this proposal. And I appreciate your time today and your service on the board. Cheers.
Good evening. My name is Brian Dempsey. I actually live in the Los Gamos neighborhood and right around the corner. I'm actually not opposed to this, some level of housing there. I'm curious on a couple of points that obviously need to be flushed out, and I'm sure will be. One is current max five units. Proposed zoning is 163 to 349, I think you may have mentioned that. What will prevent this from going over 180 and coming in at the 11th hour, but bumping it up to 200-plus or something like that? Just curious if the developer would be willing to make commitments to limit so that that doesn't come up later in the, later on? I would really urge the planning commission to really take into consideration the greater plannings that are being approved. In other words, the North Gate Walk, and I believe there is another development along Lucas Valley that has been talked about for years, or there's a lot that's being sold over there, and how the long-term effect of this, of this decision will have over the next five to 10 years. The thoroughfare street, ma'am, I think you mentioned that the easement would be removed, and maybe I misheard, or it was misstated? I wasn't-
Okay.
Okay. All right. Not going anywhere? Can we get that in writing? So, will the applicant consider maybe asking for, will the applicant go to the state and ask for additional state exemptions for density, going back to the comment I made a few minutes ago as far as going over 180? And as for the actual thoroughfare, the blocked-off thoroughfare there, that's actually a bit of a hazard. About nine months ago, my wife was hit by a biker just walking by there. We've got two young kids and dog. If my kid was hit by that bike rider, would have been a lot more severe than it was. There's no, I think, Mark, you may have asked, or Jeff, I'm not sure, one of you guys asked about how is that conduit being used? It's very highly trafficked by commuters on bikes. I use it. It's a great little thoroughfare. But would the developer work with the owner of 140 and whoever owns the easement, not sure of that, to figure out a way to actually reconfigure that? Because if you add 180 units there, and if the developer is saying that we don't need a lot of parking, or parking will be offset by alternative usages of transportation, that inevitably will increase the usage of that conduit there by 180, or 1401. So, can that be improved by the city, by the planning commission, by the developer, by 1401? Can we get people together in the same room to talk about that? That's it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Ward, and I'm the executive director of the Marin YMCA. So, I think according to these visuals, we are the neighbor of this potential project. And at this point, we don't have a position for or against the project. We're very hopeful and see a lot of benefits that potentially exist, but you certainly got a really difficult process and journey and decision-making. So, thank you for taking it so seriously. The thing that is really appealing to us is this idea of a neighborhood at Los Gamos. The Marin Y is a community center for about 10,000 people within a 10-mile radius of this space. We have 300 employees. And so, when, when I'm hearing the, the demographics and the, the potential tenants and those impacted, we know them really well. They're across the street from this potential project. So, our hope is, is that if this gets approved, that the developers will take us really seriously as their key stakeholder in actually creating a community and a neighborhood on Los Gamos, because that is something that we for sure will value and be a benefit to everybody. And, and thank you for your time.
George Pegelow, resident of Terre Linda for many years, co-founder of Next Gen Marin. This is an excellent opportunity to adjust the zoning laws that stand in the way of anything approaching reasonable addressing of the housing situation we face in this county and throughout the state. This commission has distinguished itself in the past with very wise decisions about what is appropriate in San Rafael. And I urge you to approve this project at 180 units. We need housing for young people and others who serve us. And to approve this, we'll, I think, send a message to the rest of the county. It's time to take another look at these ridiculous zoning laws that prevent Marin County from really addressing the needs of its citizens for housing for low-income people, people who provide us with services. So, I applaud your past decisions, which I think have been excellent, and set a standard for this county that hopefully other cities will meet at some point in the future. But this is an excellent design. It needs to be approved, and I hope that the NIMBYs will chill and let you do your work. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Adil Modan, and I'm also with Next Gen Marin. We're a local group that analyzes some of the biggest issues in Marin. And one of the largest issues we've seen, that comes as no surprise, is housing. And I've lived in Terre Linda, San Rafael, my whole life. I actually went to Terre Linda High. Mr. Lubin Mercy was my world geography teacher every freshman year. And as a, as an engineering graduate now, I, I work in Nevada, and I'm looking to get into the housing market soon. And I really like how this property has, from the get-go, really, kept workforce housing in mind, especially how they utilize the, the zoning amendment to build 180 units, where it was initially only zoned for five, five homes. I really like the incor- incorporation of open space by clustering the building and the detailed attention to the ridgeline. And one thing I did want to know is, according to their website, they talked about, you know, solar, electric vehicle charging and stuff like that. I've, I've, I take buses usually. I've been taking them for, ever since high school. And I know that 35, 49, 70, they all pass by there in like half-an-hour intervals. But I wanted to know how they're incorporating, like, ride-sharing, such as like Uber or Lyft, especially since this is zoned for, or, you know, tailored towards workforce housing. And I also wanted to know a little bit more of the specifics regarding the HVAC, and how that's going to kind of reduce noise and how, you know, what effect it's going to have on the power consumption in the area. And then, overall, you know, these smaller units are perfect for someone who's, who's like me, you know, workforce, just getting into the workforce, you know, small unit. I don't need something huge. I like how it's right next to the YMCA. You know, I want a community to be built where, you know, really, there was none before. And, yeah. Thank you.
My name is Alexandra Alma, and I live at, oh, sorry. My name is Alexandra Alma, and I live at 1056 J Los Gamos Road. And the first thing is that, living on Los Gamos Road, even with just the Y there, we have a lot, we have a fair amount of people who come down our, on Los Gamos Road, not realizing that you actually have to go all the way around Lucas Valley to get to the Y. So, if this development were put in, obviously, the people who live there would know how to get there, but like, anyone visiting them or going to other stuff there might wind up coming, there might be a lot more traffic down Los Gamos Road, even though it's not a through street. The second thing is, someone else mentioned, fires are certainly a thing to think about in this state. So, with being right next to open space, it would seem like if there were ever a fire on that hill with a single exit point, you might get congestion, or like, it might become a problem. And in addition, I was wondering if the, the edge of the property would wind up being fenced, or there would be a gate or that kind of thing, or whether they would be, have open access? And I noticed that there's going to be a play structure and workout area with fairly extensive trails on the undeveloped- trails on the undeveloped portion, and I was wondering whether that would mean that that portion would wind up being landscaped? And since it is currently, to my knowledge, oak woodland, that would mean a greater impact on the environment and that kind of thing if it was landscaped, whereas opposed to if it was, you know, left with minimal development? Because, I mean, it's called a vacant lot, but that area isn't really vacant. It's definitely, it's forested, and like we get deer and raccoons and that kind of thing coming down from that area. And then finally, it says that it's like trying to provide affordable housing, but it's providing the minimal required by law, and then the rest is market rate. So if, you know, housing costs are going up in all of the Bay Area, and I know a lot of people who can't live in the Bay Area, even though they work there and that kind of thing, so it would definitely be subject to housing costs rising and that kind of thing. So that would be a concern. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Julie Grellis, and I'm also a new homeowner in the neighborhood. I live at 80 Upper Oak Drive. New homeowner by a stroke of luck, and I'm here because I do support this project. I was excited to hear about it. I'm a former teacher, and now I support other people in becoming teachers. So I know the need that we have in the teaching community if we want to retain teachers and keep teachers coming here. I grew up in Sonoma County, and then I lived for a decade in Oakland, and, you know, we're seeing the housing crisis at a critical point in both of these places. And we are in the midst of a housing crisis. Compromise has to happen. So, let's say there is a little bit more traffic. It's a little inconvenient sometimes. That's the highway that I get on. I get on right there to get to work. That's a sacrifice I personally am willing to make, because people are dying on the streets right now because of homelessness. And, you know, we all say, oh, this isn't a good spot for it. It should be somewhere else. But where? We know we need housing across the whole county and every area. This is next to a freeway. I don't even know who wants to live there. It's next to a freeway. It's full of office parks. I honestly thought that was a blighted area when I moved here. It's not the most attractive area. It seems like an excellent place to put a development. I love wildlife. I love open space. It's surrounding that area. We have a ton of open space. We're really lucky for that. So that's one concern I don't actually have. The wildlife, I think, will move next door to the next open spot. So, I just think we have to have compromise at this point. Things have to change. We all are gonna have to compromise. So I thank you for considering this project, for supporting it and supporting our future generations, kids, teachers, and staying here and living here in our community.
Hi. My name is Shawna Alma, and I live on Los Gamos Road at San Rafael Manor. And some of you were mentioning that you didn't think there were any trails up there. There actually are trails up there. I know. I walk them. And people do use that hillside to just go up there and have a walk, that kind of thing. So it is used. It's not a vacant lot. It's hillside, mixed oak woodland and grassland. And I'm just wondering about, there are a number of wildlife species that do live there, and I'm just wondering what's going to be done to protect them, including California quail, which I've seen up there, and various other species that live there. So I just want to make sure that they are protected, and the impact on them is minimized. I had another thing. Oh, and also, I was also wondering about, there'll be affordable housing, but affordable is relative. So I'm, my concern is that we have a, currently in the area, we have a labor shortage, like Safeway and North Gate Mall are having trouble finding people who can afford to live in Marin and still work at those places. And so, I'm wondering if there will be places for, for instance, somebody who works at Safeway would be affordable, would be able to afford to live there? Or works at North Gate Mall, would they be, would they, could they afford to live in this community? So, that's basically it.
My name is Linda Jackson. I'm here with the Aging Action Initiative tonight. I am an older person in San Rafael. When we sold our house a year and a half ago, there's a dearth of places for us to downsize to in San Rafael. And I have, we rent the last new unit built in downtown. There were only 10 units built in downtown. We got the last one in the last 18 years. So there's a real housing challenge for older people. And then it is reflected in the mismatch between the housing where older people live, like the house I sold, and then where younger people live and crowded up in the apartments. And so we need new housing throughout our city to start addressing this mismatch of housing. I've always, you know, I was a planner for many years with the city of San Rafael, and I was intrigued, always, by this site, because it's so large. It's in north San Rafael, and it had so few units allocated to it. So, it's, that was 32 years ago, when it was put in the general plan to have this kind of designation on it. Things have changed in the last 32 years. Housing is no longer just an issue. As you heard tonight, it's a crisis. The design of buildings has come a long ways since the 80s. So we have night light, night sky lighting that's possible. We have hillside design that's possible. There's solar. This is a residential project with a mix of units. It's not just all one kind of unit with one kind of design. So it's an intriguing proposal. Local architect who knows our local, our design sensitivities, and it has the potential to be a real needed investment in north San Rafael, not just for older people wanting to downsize, families wanting to move here, and employers wanting to have workers who can live here and stay in their jobs. So I ask, we ask, that you say yes to taking this to the next step for your consideration. Thank you.
Hi. I'm back. Pam Reeves. I forgot to ask if you would ask the applicant to show the bulk and mass from the point of view of Rafael Manor on that side of, it's very confusing, because it's Los Gamos Road, and then Los Gamos Drive is where Rafael Manor is. But if you could show the bulk and mass, not just from the freeway, it could be just fine, but...
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Nicole Rodney. I'm a resident of Los Gamos Road, which is where San Rafael Manor is located. And I'm heartened that this is being well-thought-out, and that we're thinking about creating units where people can have affordable housing. I think we do have a crisis. I think we do need housing. The one thing that concerns me about this plan is the use of the open space, and it sounds like there are gonna be pathways and maybe, I don't know, some sort of sports things going in on the open space that heads towards Los Gamos Road. There is a lot of wildlife up on that hill and in the valley where this is gonna be located if it takes place. We've got, we've got water that comes through. A lot of the animals there need that, use that, so I worry about them. We've got things as large as coyotes that I've seen up there who do live there. And so, I wish that this could possibly be in as a housing area, and that we could consider not putting pathways through the rest of the open space. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your service. My name is Tolga Bin Yildız. I'm not for or against this project. I just have a couple of concerns and questions. Like, I don't know if this development is for rental units or for sale, so I don't know about that. And I'm a resident of Terolinda, and I use Los Gamos Road a lot, and I have two small kids. And Los Gamos Road is, in my opinion, a very dangerous road, because only one side is the sidewalk, and it's very, very dark. So that's why, if you ever approve this project, I really don't know if you can guarantee this, but having a road to, connecting those, Los Gamos Road to this development will be really, really bad for our community there. So I just want to mention that. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else? Okay. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. So as we've said a number of times, that this is, this is a study session to provide the applicant with some preliminary feedback. In this case, there is, there's a whole lot that we don't know yet. So I think that our feedback at this point is sort of a very early response based on what we do know. Ally, or would you, we put up the slide that shows sort of some of the different categories that you'd like us to address? Okay, so these are the five categories in which staff has requested some input from the planning commission. Are there any planning commissioners who feel inclined to kick this off?
Madam Chair, do you want us, would you prefer that we go topic by topic, or commissioner by commissioner?
Well, I think I'd like to go by commissioner, obviously, but have that commissioner go through all of the topics. Would you like to go, Commissioner Davidson?
So, on the intensity of development, I don't, I know that they're proposing 180, but once they iron out and look at everything else, and we're further along in the process, I think they have the option to use the concessions, no? You don't know the answers, that you're not willing to say it's 180, that's it. Right? Because you don't know, there's a lot of stuff you don't know, and then you do have the option of using the state concessions.
If it was a density bonus project, we would, but here's a rezoning scenario. So the plan is, although we have the wide range in the category of the general plan, we would use the PD to set the density. And so that way, the concerns about, well, hey, are you gonna go for 300 or something? That's how you control and lock in a total. But the 180 was kind of backed into from the site constraints analysis. So, fitting more, maybe it's possible, but seemed, seemed like the right number.
So, as a big picture comment from me, I'm very supportive. The visuals that I've seen and what they've done with the space and incorporating the use of sort of like the play structures and stuff, I really support that. I think, as one of the commentators said, this is the time to take a look at our zoning and see what we can do. This is an optimum piece of land. I like what they're proposing. I'm not worried about the height increase. I think the views from the freeway and not jeopardizing the ridgeline. There is a lot of concern about what seems to me that it's gonna be looked at through the environmental process, as far as how it impacts wildlife and everything else. Hillside development, the city has very specific design guidelines for hillside development, and I believe that's gonna be for our design review board to really dive in and take a look into all of those issues. Open space, as I mentioned earlier, I really would like to encourage discussions with the county about this land swap. It just makes sense. I'm not ready, I support it. I think you can save a lot more open space if the county was to be a player in this. And housing need status, I think a lot of people have said it, it would increase our quotas, or whatever they're called, but I'm in general support of the zoning changes in the general plan.
Yeah, so I think just starting from the top, in terms of intensity of development, I like the thoughtful approach that the applicant has taken around kind of looking and reimagining what can be done with that particular space. I think some of the comments from the community kind of reinforced the need to think a bit more holistically around what, what role the units are gonna play in this sort of surrounding area. I think workforce housing is also really important. But I also think that it's worth noting, and, you know, part of it is site constraints, but, you know, we're not looking to max out on the total amount of units that can be put there, that there is sort of a sense of moderation, both due to geography, but then also due to the intended use of the space. So I think that's gonna be something that is gonna be important to take note of as we continue through this process, if they choose to do so. From a height perspective, yeah, I think, you know, I'll sort of mirror some of the comments that Commissioner Davidson made in that respect. You know, I think that some of the, the community comments around, I guess, the looming nature of the building, you know, they may be a little bit overblown, especially given sort of the size of the building relative to the, to the size of the ridgeline. I'm not particularly concerned about it. Again, I think the final heights are gonna be something that we explore and kind of move through as we go through the design process. In terms of, in terms of hillside design elements, I think I'll defer pretty much all of that to the design review board. I'm not an architect. I don't really have particularly strong feelings about that. I think the only thing that I would say, you know, again, is, again, sort of mirroring what Commissioner Davidson sent around, engaging with the county and kind of pushing that, because I think that, I think just in terms of, you know, I guess, the concept of shoot your shot, right? You know, if you have sort of an optimal design that includes this particular county land, I think it's worth, it's worth trying to push for it through this process. And I think that's something that's definitely worth looking into. From the standpoint of open space, I guess one question that I did not ask earlier, hopefully I can just sort of quickly get a question in there, is, would the, would the trails that are built on the property be accessible to the public as well? Yes. Okay. Yeah, so I think, I think that lends itself, again, to that community, that community sense. You know, we'll do sort of environmental impact assessments as part of this process to better understand the impact on wildlife. Although, you know, again, you know, thinking sort of from a bigger picture, it's really tough for me to say, you know, I'm concerned about, you know, the California quails when people are dying homeless in Oakland. You know, I think it's a matter of, you know, what do you really prioritize? Do you prioritize, you know, other humans, or do you prioritize, you know, animals that can be relocated? And then, you know, I guess that ties into housing need status. Again, we're not trying to max out the space. Again, you know, I know that the state has certain requirements. I'm of the belief that, you know, we do need to balance the need for more housing with what, with what the city and its infrastructure can reasonably sustain. And so that's why, again, I like the fact that we're not trying to max out the units on this, but we're taking a thoughtful approach. We're taking unit-sized approaches which have sort of a natural constraint on, you know, potentially a natural constraint on market prices. So I think that these are all really good foundations for, you know, for continuing through this process and kind of doing the additional due diligence and discovery that's gonna be necessary to come, come up with like a final plan.
In terms of housing needs, I think it goes without question that we have serious housing needs, and this is a great part of the answer at this time. I think I would rather look at this, the use of this land as not, oh, we're, we could look at 300, but we're only going to 180. I like to think of it kind of from the other side of, you know, this could be just a few as... I, I like to think of it kind of from the other side of, you know, this could be just a few estates, and we're, you know, this is potentially 180, which is a massive increase from what would otherwise be possible there. And, and I think that's a good thing. What I, what I wouldn't want is to encourage too much building, and if there's, you know, if the applicant sees too positive a reception here, to then think, oh, well, we can add another 50. You know, I, I don't, I just don't see that, that happening. Or at least, I don't see that moving things in a positive direction. Yeah, I think the, this definitely helps with RENA. It sounds to me like it would, I know there's concern from people who live, especially at San Rafael Manor, that this could detrimentally affect them. I think because this, the, the road slash avenue is, you know, is blocked from vehicular access, it, it sounds like the, the concern is fairly minimal or de minimis. There might be the odd person who drives on one side of Los Gamos, thinking they're on the other side and they can't get through, but I don't see it really appreciably or materially changing the traffic over on the San Rafael Manor side. Maybe because that is a concern of, of nearby neighbors, that's something that could be confirmed or looked into, just a, a little bit to provide some assurance over there on that side. And maybe there's some, something that can be done to help provide that assurance. It would be great to have some assurance, too, that, that, you know, teachers and, and others and similarly situated in, in those income levels may have an opportunity to, to live here. Part of, of integrating in to this area with a development such as this is to be able to state confidently that you're, you're becoming part of the fabric of the community. And part of the fabric of this community is the teachers. It is the, the police officers. It is the firemen and the fire, fire people who help protect us. It'd be great to know that there are gonna be some units that are in the income range, that would fit the income range of those people, especially the teachers. And, and to that point, part of the quality of, of our schools in this area are dependent upon retaining, or, you know, hiring, being able to hire, attract and hire and retain teachers. And, you know, if you're, if you're a teacher looking at possibly teaching in this area, one of the things you're gonna be looking at is where are you gonna be living? Where are you gonna live? So this, this could really have an impact on potentially the, the hiring and retaining of, of teachers for the local schools. So it'd be great if you keep that angle in mind, and maybe it wouldn't be a, a legal promise, but maybe a, a good faith promise to try to keep that in mind for some of the units to have some kind of an angle to help especially the teachers. Height, as mentioned earlier, I'm, am concerned about height. Frankly, it is refreshing, you know, we, we see some buildings downtown where they're, they're using certain rules to get up to 70, 75 feet, and it's, you know, if we're looking at an increase from 36 to 50 feet. I'm, I'm not a huge proponent of increasing building heights, but that's modest enough that I, I guess I'm okay with it, so long as the bulk and mass is, is tended to in an appropriate way. As for the use of the open space, I, you know, I wanna see more definition around how the open space would be, you know, the walking trails and the area around the walking trails would be tended to and maintained. I like that there is the clustering. I like that the, the buildings are not more spread out. I, I think that that helps with integration into the open space area. Yeah, and in terms of the, the trails, in my mind's eye, I'm seeing trails in, you know, amidst an area that looks and feels like open space, too. And I hope that that is the intent, notwithstanding the, the existence of some structures, you know, at, at various points in the trails. That's all I have at this point.
All right. In full disclosure, I have to share with you that I have been on this property in kindergarten. I was a football, basketball coach at the Y, and my team lost a championship game, and we all had a good cry on this property. So, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I'm okay coming back. I can go there and look at it and not, you know, have those feelings, but. Yeah, it's a great property. It's a great site. I'm okay with increasing the density. I think, obviously, we need housing. The whole teacher thing, they get the summers off. That seems enough to me. I don't know. But, um, no, we do need housing for, affordable housing for teachers and public safety and officials and all that good stuff. I'm okay with the height, because the hillside, I mean, when you come forward with the project, if this is approved tonight, the changing of the zoning, it would be nice to have some elevation is drawing with the ridge line from the freeway and from Los Gamos Road. I'm sure you'd do it, but it'd be nice. Los Gamos Road will not be connected to Los Gamos Avenue anytime soon, so if that's a concern of, of the residents, no more soon, no, no more soon than Butterfield will be attached to Freitas Parkway. I'm pretty sure that won't happen either, so, but those, those things, I appreciate that, but that's not gonna happen, I don't think, anytime soon. The use of hillside development, I think it's, I, I like the look of the project. I know there's some concern about bulk and mass. But I, I do like the way it looks. I think it'll fit in nicely. There's no really, you're not drawing from anything locally other than a box at the YMCA, but I, I like the use of color. I like, you know, it's good. I think it, it, there is, we do have the discussion about maintenance of the trails, if we want to have access to the open space, or just trails. Do we want to draw people there? That's a conversation for later. But I understand the concern about leaving in its natural state versus access, so maybe, again, that's down the road. Housing need, yeah. I guess that's, that's, some people were concerned about one way in and one way out, and I think about Skylark in San Rafael, I think, in Larkspur. They have like 420 units, and there's one way in and one way out, so, and that's up a really steep hill. So I don't know that the fire department will have a problem with this development as it, as it's roughly presented today. I think, I think it's a, I think it's a great project. I think it's needed. I think we all agree the location is, is optimal, and I hope it, I hope it goes forward, but I'm in approval. I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, intensity of development, I think it's time to upzone the property. It's been, what, 30, either 30, by one account, 32 years, by another, 37 years since it was first downzoned to McMansion zoning. And so I think it's very appropriate that this would serve to fulfill some portion of the city's needs to create more housing at, at an affordable level. And I also like the fact that, and I think the, I accept the explanation that you backed into the number of, of units as far as the, as far as the intensity of, of development, that, that does, does appeal to me. I kind of like the fact that you're gonna have to do this under a PD, so we're not stuck with trying to, to sort out all these complicated, you know, the, the intersection of inclusionary housing, zoning rules from the city zoning ordinance and the state housing density bonus rules. It's gonna be a pretty straightforward 20%, and that has great appeal to me. I don't know, the staff report did say that with respect to height, which is the next topic, that you may have to undergo a feasibility analysis for that, but I'm assuming that you've already, you've already thought about that, and that, given if there is support for the project, that should not be something that's difficult to overcome. I think the site is, you know, the last places that are being built in, in our city and county that aren't, aren't totally infill sites are the most difficult ones, one of the most building constraints, hillside. So it's not, not surprising that this project is here now. I think there are gonna be a lot of engineering and environmental hurdles, but you'll work through, you'll work through those, or you, or you won't, you know? But, but that's not, that's not the reason we're here tonight, is to pass, pass judgment on, on that. I'm, I'm fine with the, with the height. I think the, you know, it's gonna be, it's a matter of design. The one thing I would say is, and we heard this expressed in, in the chambers tonight, is that I think some of us still don't know exactly what, what it's gonna look like from various views, from, from the freeway, from Los Gamos Drive, from Los Gamos Road. And so it would help as we go forward to develop a few more visuals to just help with that. I'm satisfied with the explanation about the height and preservation of the ridge line view, but that, that, that's fine. With respect to open space, this is an, this is an interesting issue. Our city policies require that we respect views from open spaces as well as views onto certain open space areas. And that was my, the source of my question about the use, use of, of the property. I don't know that, it's still probably too early to, to know exactly what the view from the backside would be and how, and if it would have any kind of a significant impact on, on the view, because you claim that hill, you're looking at the freeway anyway, so you're, you're, I'm not sure how much the, the view is compromised from, from putting in this, in this development. Another item with respect to the open space was interesting, and one of the speakers raised this issue, is that you, you, I do think that the design is respecting and preserving portions of the property as open space. Now you butt up against the city's design requirements that say, when you, when you build a project like this, you've got to provide certain recreational amenities on site. So I think you're gonna be hiring a, a world-class landscape architect to figure out how to build those amenities in a way that respects the, the open space oak woodland character of, of the site. But I see no reason to not accept that challenge and, and move forward with it. The, the housing needs analysis, I've, I think I've already touched on it, although I will, I'll point out another reason that I like this, like the project and the proposal as presented, is that it is rental housing. And rental housing gets us more affordability than if this were ownership BMR housing. We're gonna be, we have a certain, if you look at the chart that's in the staff report, you'll see that it's gonna include some, some very low income units in, in the mix. And that's a good thing, because you wouldn't have that affordability level if it were a, if it were a, an ownership project. I believe I'm, I'm correct about that. You can correct me if we're wrong on that. So with that, I think that's, I, I will, I will, I do wanna react to something I heard, heard earlier about helping meet our RENA numbers. I do, I do believe that it's, it's important for us to keep making progress on this. I, I don't think it's fair to say that if we fail to make progress on our RENA numbers, all local control is gonna be taken away in the planning process. It's gonna change the nature of the control, and it's gonna require us to do, to do more work to develop objective standards to allow further, further development. But this is, the, the state is not necessarily depriving us of, of local control, but I salute you for helping us address that issue and allow us to maintain some additional control over, over the process.
All right, thank you. Well, first I wanted to, to thank you and for coming forward with this idea and this proposal, because you've already, obviously, put a lot of work and a lot of time into thinking about it, and, and what you've put forth is, is thoughtful, and in its preliminary stages. I, there, there's no question, based on the data, we need more housing, so that's, let, let me say that first. What I like about what you've done is I like the clustering. I like the fact that you're not taking up all of the land. I like the, basically, the idea or concept that you're trying to create a community here. One of the things I don't care for that other people seem to like is that having this, basically, taking the rest of the property and, to a certain extent, making it a playground. First of all, if I were a mother, and, well, I am a mother, but if I were a mother, five-year-old, and I was over here in building one, there is no way I'd want my five-year-old all the way on the other side of 10 acres in the playground. I would want my five-year-old way more centrally located, so that if they needed me, I could look out the window, whatever it is. But I, I really think you need to reconsider putting a play structure that far from where the caretakers of these children are. But also, I just, I'm not sure that having the trails on the property is that necessary. I really like the idea. I think it's, well, based on the general plan, it's important to provide access through the property, maybe on the property with some trails, but this many might just be too many. Just, just a thought. What I would like to see, well, when I go, so I think the, when I first looked at the project, I was a little bit, I thought it was awfully dense. But I, the more I have heard people talk and looked at this, I'm getting far more comfortable with that. Same with the height. I wanna see what this looks like. I wanna see mockups and say, if I'm driving down 101, if I'm on Los Gamos Road, what does this actually look like? From the perspective of me as a person, I'm riding my bike, I'm driving my car, not from up high, so that really can, we can understand what it's about. And that ties into the hillside development as well. There's a lot of design guidelines, there's, and I think if you follow those, you're going to be fine, but it would be nice to see what those look like. Some of the other things that I would like to see, I would like you to really think about how green you can build this building, and we talked a little bit about some of the energy efficiency standards, but there are things well beyond that. As an example, you talked about solar. Well, in the design, are the roofs being oriented to maximize solar? Things like that, and really keep a, a real focus on how to make these buildings as green as possible. The only others thing I would say is just that if we look at this, and in the future, if we develop, if we approve 180 units at some point in time in the future, I would put something in place to say that that's it, that not 10, 10 years down the road, we wouldn't be presented with, okay, well, let's put three more, you know, three more buildings over here on the other side. So that would be something I would wanna see. Thank you. Ally, is this, is there, are there any questions that you have of the commissioners based on the input and feedback you were looking for from us?
No, I don't have any questions, but I'm wondering if there's any clarity that the applicant might want?
And I have, I have a couple of things to commission, as well.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah. First of all, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of, of RENA is, is that if, it's fairly rare for jurisdictions to meet their RENA numbers, and if you don't, you're, you're not the only one. And yes, if you, if you don't make your RENA numbers, I guess that technically officially could leave you vulnerable to a lawsuit, but my understanding is that in the past, they've gone after those who are really far behind their numbers. And yet, it can be expensive and punitive to a, a particular local city or town, but I don't think, given our numbers, I don't think we're on a path of looking at a lawsuit for not meeting our RENA numbers. So I would, I don't think that the commission is swayed by fear of, of some non-compliance with RENA, but I just wanted to air that and make sure that that was out there. And if, if I'm off base somehow, let me know. And then, secondly, I actually did have a question that I just thought of. Not all that long ago, the commission entertained and approved of a, you know, a project here on Los Gamos, the Kaiser project. And that project is anticipated to involve thousands, thousands of cars coming, you know, to and from 101 and coming, you know, onto Los Gamos on a daily basis. And I just wanted to make sure that any traffic analysis is going to include those cars. I know that, obviously, that that project is in, in, in earlier stages. And I, I, I think it's far enough along in the process that even though there may not be actual cars, I wanted to make sure that any traffic analysis that would be done here would include the Kaiser traffic numbers, because they are so substantial.
Yes, that's correct. So our, so the traffic study that will be needed for this project will include anything that's already existing, and then any future foreseeable increase in traffic would be included as well. So yes, the Kaiser traffic.
And the reason why I bring that up specifically is that there, just in the last number of months, there was one project, there were two projects that both involved, you know, a potentially material or substantial increase in traffic, but due to the entitlement process and where these projects were in those processes. and where these projects were in those processes, you know, one, the traffic from one of those projects wasn't necessarily going to get factored into the traffic study of the other project, which I felt was unfortunate, and it sounds like that that fear is, would be unfounded here.
Yeah, I mean, the Kaiser Project has been approved, and it's, there's an EIR already in place, so we would, we would have to include that.
Great, thanks.
I just heard from Supervisor Connolly, he'd be happy to give you that easement. So just see him, see him tomorrow, he'll be in his office, he'll just, he'll take care of that for you. All right, so no charge for that.
Any further comments on this item? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the Planning Commission Annual Meeting. So I will now open the public hearing for the annual meeting of the Planning Commission. Would staff make their presentation at this time?
Okay, so we have three items on, as part of this report, we, every year, your commission gets together and elects at the beginning of the year, elects a new chair and vice chair, identifies any potential changes to the rules and procedures, and then we take names for liaison to the DRB. So the first thing I wanted to start with is the rules and procedures. There were a couple of things that were identified in the staff report. One was presented by Commissioner Schopert, and it's related to ex parte communication. And so the packet also includes the rules and procedures with amendments as proposed by Commissioner Schopert, and there's an additional amendment that was included by staff, and that was related to, I think earlier this year, we had a situation where we, there was an informational item on the agenda, no decision was to be made, and we didn't have a quorum, and so we were having to kind of combine a couple of the rules and the rules and procedures to decide whether we could even convene, whether your commission could even convene the hearing. And we determined that we could, that you could convene, but we needed to make it really clear in the rules and procedures, so that language has been added in the rules and procedures as well. And then I didn't hear from anybody else, but if there are other items that your commission feels need to be added to the rules and procedures, we can, you can share those with me tonight, and I can make those amendments and bring those back at a future date.
Food, food allowed on the deal. Okay, we can get that down.
Do we have a motion?
Food and beer, is that right? Right, Mark?
And so I guess, at this point, my apologies, as I'm not familiar with how you have done these in the past, but is it, would it be normal for the commissioner presenting the changes to have a discussion about the topic?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, the topics, I think probably what we need to do is the two recommended changes, discuss and vote on them separately. So I believe that if we want to start with the one of allowing, you'll have to restate it, but if there, but for study for presentations, there does not need to be a quorum. I'm having a tough time finding that on my thing right now. There it is. There it is.
So if you look at page two, if you're looking at the court.
Yeah.
So revise section 2B by adding the following, and that would be, a quorum shall not be required to convene a meeting for presentation of information items, only where no action by the commission will be required. So that would be maybe your start.
I'll move. Does that change? I actually like the, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
No, well, let's get a second, and then we can open up for discussion. Can I get, does anyone want a second? Commissioner Lubomirsky's motion that we approve the addition?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion?
Yes, so this, for those of you who weren't here, because we didn't have a quorum, this relates to a presentation with respect to the downtown and general plans, the scope of the EIR, or it was, do I have that right? Anyway, anyway, and so we had Barry Miller, the consultant for the general plan update, and another consultant, whose name I don't recall at this point, were present and wanted input from the commission. And since there was no action being taken, we weren't going to vote for anything, but we were going to give feedback, there was a discussion about whether we should proceed or not, and we decided that because they were here and wanted to move, the consultants were here and wanted to move forward with their work, that we would give them the benefit of the thoughts of the less than a quorum that were present at here. And I think that was okay in that particular circumstance. I'm a little concerned about not, if, you know, if people are asking for the input of the commission, and all they're getting, and they're getting input from a fewer, you know, from a fewer number of the commission than a quorum, whether we're going to leave out important comments or important information from those who are unable to attend. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, and we did move forward with this on that basis. I do think there's a reason to give some careful thought to whether we ought to approve it on that basis.
I think that if, to your point, I think if people were absent and they wanted to add their input, they could do that at the next meeting through the minutes. If they could, they could then send it to the staff, and staff could add it to the minutes, then it would be part of the official record. If, if they wanted that part of it.
Yeah, if I can comment on that. So if you, if you had comments prior to the meeting, you could add those. I suppose you could provide comments after, but it wouldn't be, like, your feedback would be basically at the meeting or prior, is typically the way we would, we would expect or request.
I don't think it's happened very often, it hasn't been happened, I think it happened, and I wasn't there.
Yeah.
So it doesn't happen very often, but I think, I think you guys handled it very well, and I think we should do that, should it ever happen again, do that same thing.
Well, in this case also, I mean, technically, then, you could have one person here, because it's just saying that a quorum shall not be required. So there's no minimum either, you're saying you don't have to have four, but you could have one.
It's permissive, it's not mandatory.
Right.
I mean, you'd still choose not to convene.
Right. I don't know.
I think it's a legal question, oh, should legal weigh in?
Well, for non-decision items, we do have something in our, in the rules and procedures, you do have something in the rules and procedures now that says you don't have to have a quorum, but it was more specifically about convening the meeting.
So it seems like we have discretion, like he said, that at that moment, whoever's present can decide.
It sounds also like it may be superfluous, too. I mean, it sounds like the rules already in place would not prohibit convening.
You could make that assumption, that because it's.
I mean, just explicitly saying it. I mean, this is almost implied, if not implied, already.
But the difficulty was, we didn't know the answer to the question, and the meeting was here, and we didn't have a quorum, and the chair had to decide, can we convene this meeting in the absence of a quorum when we're not going to take actions? We didn't, for example, we did not take any action on approval of the minutes, because we didn't have a quorum. The items that required action, there was no, there was no action taking. And there is a, you know, there is a, there is a rule that says if there's the absence of a quorum, you can adjourn the meeting until a later date. You can take that action to adjourn the meeting, but it doesn't say you have to take that action. So that's, that was, that was, so I think what staff would like is, would like to have something in place that you can point to next time, so when the question comes up 10 years from now, be able to answer that, when none of us are around to say, I remember that time back in 2019 when this happened. But I think as a policy matter, there's a, there is a, there is a discussion to be had about whether we ought to be providing input from the commission in the absence of the full commission. And the reason I think that that's important is because this is, even though we're not taking a decision in that situation, we are a deliberative body, and I know that when I sit here and I hear my fellow commissioners say something interesting, or that raises another issue, it causes me to think, and causes, may cause me to make comments that I would not have otherwise made had other commissioners not been present and made those comments.
I like that this provides something that you can point to on the spot if you're in a pinch, and you don't have to feel like you're guessing, or you're in an area of uncertainty.
Right, but would this apply to, I mean, it says, the language says, presentation of information items, so would a study session be information items? I mean, in other words, could you, you have convened tonight's meeting with less than a quorum?
So the rules and procedures already do allow for the study session to be conducted without, without a quorum.
Okay. All right.
Should we say, just so, I know it may be a little duplicative, but it might be then easier to find, do we say study session and/or information items here? Again, just first, just so it's just easier to find if you're in a pinch?
Sorry, I'm looking for the.
I think of it as the same, I'm sorry.
The rule on study sessions is in F, 2F.
Oh, so it's right there. I thought it was buried somewhere else. Yeah, no, never mind.
Okay.
Yeah, and I added it to the regular meetings because, and, you know, I mean, I think it could, it could be relocated to the study session section where you, I think I included it both, in both locations, so on study session workshops and informational presentations. Study sessions and workshops I added, informational presentations, and then in that, it does talk about convening of the whole committee.
So did you, did you modify F in some way in the rules? Because there's a line in the margin.
Yeah, only in the, only in the title.
Right.
I got it.
Okay, yeah.
Well, okay, I mean, I'm sort of changing my mind here. It seems like if we're already doing it for study sessions, where the, somebody's asking for feedback from the commission, why don't we just move it into that section, as I think Commissioner Schaefer may have been suggesting?
So what I'm hearing is eliminate item four from section 2B, and then instead, keeping F with a change, changed by adding informational presentations, and I think that takes care of.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Insert after the comma, after a study session in F, or for presentation of information items.
Okay. Got it. So Commissioner Schopert, would you amend your motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm amending, yes.
Lubomirsky.
I amended, too, reflect what was just stated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the other, and let me just make sure, Ally, that you feel comfortable, you understand. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Then the other question was, yeah, let me find where that went. Okay. So this is on page exhibit 26, under presentation of hearings or proposals, and it adds, under the order of speaking, that the chair shall ask for commissioners to make ex parte disclosures and potential conflict of interest disclosures with respect to the proposed project. And this would occur once the public hearing has been opened and prior to the staff report. So this is something that we've been doing sort of ad hoc at times, and any, are there any thoughts on this and need for it and?
Well, since I proposed it, I'll give by way background. Last March, Commissioner Davidson and I attended the Planning Commissioners Academy, sponsored by the League of California Cities. And during one of those meetings about covering the topic of conducting public hearings, this issue was raised, and the, and the speakers felt strongly about the need to make full disclosure of any ex parte communications. In fact, there was a discussion about different jurisdictions' rules about site visits, but everybody was in agreement on, that spoke that day, that there is a need to disclose before speakers speak that if you've had any communications on the matter, so that the, so that the applicant, and those are coming before the commission to speak, have an opportunity to respond to the communications that are disclosed by the commissioner. And I've, I just, I've found it to be somewhat awkward to try to decide when to pipe up and make those disclosures, and this would regularize the procedure.
I have something to say. I think that if you're going to propose a rule, it should be because you're trying to fix something, you, there's something broken and it needs to be fixed. I don't think it's necessary to add something for the sake of adding something. And I understand Commissioner Schopert is, he's effectively articulating that there is, in his mind, there is a concern and a problem here that needs fixing, but I haven't heard any commissioner ever articulate that they think there's a problem in this regard. It just seems, it feels to me like a little bit more red tape, a little bit more bureaucracy that hasn't been a problem here. And I, to my understanding, people haven't had a problem saying that they've, they have a conflict of interest or what have you. Maybe another alternative would be to, just maybe on a quarterly basis, or every so often, someone in Ally's position, just to say at the beginning of the meeting, oh, and by the way, remember, you know, if you have a conflict or ex parte communication on this particular matter, just say something. You know, that feels, I like that, rather than incorporating it in when I don't, I don't see it in such a rigid fashion, when I don't really see much of a problem in any event.
To me, it seems a natural time, if you were going to recuse yourself, it'd be before the staff report, you'd leave the, so it seems like if that's when we're going to do that, that's the same time you should say, you know, you visited the site, you met with the applicant. That, to me, seems more natural flowing than jumping in after the staff, after the applicant, and then right before. I mean, I understand, I understand the idea of then the public could come up and respond to anything you might have said, but.
On the, on the conflict of interest side, I mean, my experience is that if there's a conflict, the commissioner doesn't show up. I mean, that's what I've done. I have a conflict and I don't show up, except, you know, if, you know, so for the conflict of interest issue, I mean, I haven't seen a commissioner say, oh, jeez, I have a conflict, and run out.
I don't think it's always, I mean, I think if someone has a conflict, they should obviously recuse themselves. I think part of it is just, if you could have a perceived conflict, then stating upfront that you are affiliated with such an organization, and you don't have, you don't think you have a conflict, is important, as opposed to not stating that there is some type of connection or there might be a perception of conflict. you don't have, you don't think you have a conflict is important as opposed to not stating that there is some type of connection or there might be a perception of conflict.
And I'd add, this is, it's somewhat of an awkward situation for commissioner, for commissioners who are, for lawyers who serve as commissioners. Because lawyers have not only the ethical responsibility under the rules governing services, planning commissioners, but they also have responsibilities to clients, informer clients under the rules of professional conduct that govern, govern, govern lawyers. So I've always, I mean, I know it looks funny, it may appear funny to people to have me disclosing the fact that I represented somebody 25 years ago, but I do it out of an abundance of, of caution because not only is the public entitled to know that there, there's some, some background there, but the, the applicant is entitled to know that there was a, a lawyer-client relationship in the past. And that gives the applicant the opportunity to say, no, no, you acquired information about an item to which, this is, to which the matter before the commission is now substantially related, such that you have an ethical responsibility as a lawyer, if not as a planning commissioner, to recuse yourself. So that's why, that's the reason that, that I, that I do it. And with respect to Commissioner Lubomirsky's comment about the appropriate time to do it, my proposal would be to do it at the very outset before the, the chair would call the matter, and then immediately at that moment, before the staff, staff report, ask, do any commissioners wish, have any, have any disclosures of ex parte communications or potential conflicts of interest at this time, there being, and we'll move on to the staff, staff report.
I, I think that's the right time to do it. I misunderstood. I thought you would do it before you opened the public hearing, after the staff report. You're talking before the even, I think that's a great time to do it. Is that the way it's written? I'm sorry, I mis, I either misunderstood it or?
At least how I read it is you would open the public hearing and then before the staff made their report, the chair would ask if anyone has any, I can't remember the, the ex parte communications.
I think, I think you're confusing it when they actually open it for public to come. When she says that, open it to the public is actually when we go to the item.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think we, we, you guys were talking about two different times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You call the item.
When I call the item. Right.
Yeah. So, so we're good.
Okay.
We're good.
We're good. I agree. Yeah.
So then I think I may have been mistaken about where, where this should go. This, if, okay, I, when I looked at the rule, I tried to figure out where would you fit this in? Because the first thing is the chair announces the item. And then there's an opportunity to make a request for a continuance. And it seems to me that commissioners shouldn't have to make ex parte disclosures before the request for the continuance. Or because if the matter's not going to be heard that night, you don't need to make, you don't need to make the disclosures. And that's why I, I suggested that it be taken, that, that it be in the order of, of speaking place. But I don't, I, I'll listen to, to other comments and be persuaded otherwise about when, when it should occur. Cause I think it should occur as, as early as possible, but not, but not interfere with a motion for a continuance.
But we don't, I mean, we've never offered the continuance.
I think we should leave it where we do it now. Once you, once you call it, it's the first thing you say.
Once you open the item, just as it's written, right now.
Here's any conflicts I have, so everyone knows.
Right. I think also, I mean, there, there is a section in this planning commission handbook too of what is, what is ex parte contact. So I think that's important, that all the commissioners are very up to date on what that, on the definition of what that is, so that they're not saying things they don't need to or missing something.
And then one, one thing I would add is that, because we had the situation tonight, and we had the situation in other cases where we have these conceptual reviews. But I had in mind, you know, the reason we ought to make these ex parte disclosures, even when this is a conceptual review, is because the applicant is very likely to modify its application or its conduct based on, based on the comments made here. Even though they're not the force of, force of law, they do, they do give a sense of the, of the commission. I mean, I don't know if Costco will return with an application that includes an application for a, a fueling station. I don't know. But I know that there were views expressed on that particular aspect of, of the application that could, could cause the applicant to modify its, its position. And that's, that's why I didn't, it's why I didn't put, put in here only if it's a quasi legislative matter, because it's hard to determine whether it's a quasi legislative matter if it's a conceptual hearing only.
Do we need to change anything? I mean, we do it now when you do it. It's, it's our history. So what do we, what do you?
So I would like, I mean, I'd like to regularize the conduct so that people don't pop up later on and say, oh, I forgot, I need to make that ex parte disclosure. And you're halfway into the hearing and the applicant has already spoken and you, you want to say, I, oh, I'm sorry, I communicated with somebody about this, or I attended a meeting, or I read, I read, I read this article. And then the applicant is already, has already spoken or, or somebody else has spoken. It's the, the applicant and the public deserve complete transparency in the process and they just, they deserve full disclosure at the earliest possible moment. And this would simply give the, give the chair, there'd be no question, you'd ask the questions. Anybody have anything to say? If not, we'll move on. And then there's, there's, then there's, there's no question about whether the, the disclosures were requested and they were, they were made.
How much detail should be provided in the disclosure? Should we include detail on that?
Well, I think, I think the point of this is simply to have the chair ask and not leave it up to each commissioner to come forward. That's the intent of the change. And as far as, right?
Well, tonight, I've not, nobody else made ex parte communication disclosures but me on the Los Gamos. So, so I mean, that's, I'm assuming that nobody else had, had any kind of ex parte communications.
Are we stating that we're supposed to, if we visit a site, we should claim that?
That's a, that's a whole different discussion. That's a whole different discussion. I think...
I'd like to ask staff to have legal counsel attend a meeting and educate us on this because it's pretty clear that several other jurisdictions in this state believe that, yes, that is the rule.
So it...
That's different than this door, historically. It's assumed you visit the site unless otherwise stated. So maybe that's something different. But, so to move things along. So we, we just want to give the chair a point before the item is called, the statement, does any, do any, do any commissioners have anything to disclose or any conflict to disclose?
Yeah, any disclosures.
Those 10 words. Is that what we're talking about?
That's what, that's what...
That's when historically we've done it, you know. So...
Well, I think historically, we just haven't asked. It's not part of the, what's step one, two, three, four. And, and I think your intent is to have it added to the chair and say, just like we do the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah. I think that's, that's fine. If that's what we're going.
So having said that, I think that is acceptable for me. Let's add it. However, I understand where you're going, Jeff, with, with like, everybody should state that there, there shall be, I went to the site, I want to disclose it. Perhaps somebody has to weigh in, because I, I don't agree. I went to the same meeting, but I don't agree that we're breaking the, the law with, with not disclosing that we visited the site. So there's some, the difference in opinion on that.
It's not, it's, well, it is not my opinion that there, it is wrong to do a site visit, although there are jurisdictions in this state that prohibit commissioners from making ex parte visits to, to sites. And I know that the planning commission in San Diego several years ago addressed the, the prohibition and what, and I couldn't figure out what the resolution of it was. But it is plain, there's no que, there, in my mind, there is no question based on the legal memoranda that was circulated prior to the, prior to the meeting, that disclosure of the site visit is required. It's not, it's not prohibited to make the site visit. In fact, I think it's a good idea. I'd be, I, I, you know, having practiced real estate law for, for many years, you know, the advice was you never take on a real estate matter without looking at the, at the site. So I think it's important to look, look at the site. But it is also important to disclose that you've done that because there's nothing in the staff report that says you've acquired information from a personal view of the site. And unless you convey that information to the applicant and to the public, they have no way of knowing what's going into your decision-making, making process.
My role, I, I knew nothing about being a planning commissioner. And as far as I know, that's all we, we don't need to disclose that we went to the site visit. I think this warrants a question, our role and what to disclose. We already, I think, are leaning towards having the chair ask anything to disclose. But what to disclose, I think it warrants a question to our legal advisor because I, I don't, I don't want an attorney with that many years of experience to be, to cover all the risks and liabilities because then we're going to turn the rules of the commission into this legal document. I don't, I'm not saying they're not warranted, but I think you come from a different perspective that I don't think it's needed for the role of the planning commissioners.
I can definitely, yes. I, I think that, you're right. I think it's, it would be a good idea to have that discussion with our city attorney.
Yeah.
I have seen variations of the ex parte communication and some of those do include disclosure of site visits. And so, yeah, that's, it's a good question whether that's actually an obligation or not.
So I would say that's the most important thing is, is we need some guidance from the city attorney as to what, what is, what are expert party activities or communications for the planning commissioners that we need to state.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with the chair calling for us to state them if in fact we're required to say them. And when I say that, it's just sort of, if every one of us says that we went to the site, you know, it just seems sort of silly.
Right. I, I would say that's, yeah, I would say assume we all visit the site unless you are otherwise, or I don't know what, but I don't want to hear.
I, I think that's why we need to have the opinion.
If I may ask, how many people visited the, the site on Los Gamos Road before this meeting?
I visit every site.
Oh, about a million times.
I visit every site.
But, but not specifically for this project. So am I supposed to disclose that, yeah, I've been, I've, I've been a member of the YMCA, I've gone to 1401 Golos Gamos for events, and I know, I'm familiar with what the site looks like, and I've looked at it on Google Earth. But I haven't been to the site specifically in preparation for this meeting. So do I have to disclose that?
Can we move forward to the next item? Because I really want council's way in. And so we should stop discussing it until we have the opinion of council.
So, yeah, I would appreciate if, if the city attorney would guide us on this. Because if, if I'm, if I am suggesting that we are, that we engage in some kind of legal compliance that isn't required, it's, it, I agree, it's, it's a waste of time. But I'm just, I'm just looking at the other opinions of other city attorneys.
So we have consensus that we are not going to move on this until we hear.
That's correct. So in that case, I guess, Ellie, would we then be continuing this issue? Would be continuing? Okay.
Okay. So the last item is the liaison, the design, planning commission liaisons to the design review board. Last time we got, Commissioner...
Ellie, I think we need to do the...
Oh, right, 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 right. Sorry. The next one is election of the chair and vice chair. And to give background, so typically the, the chair is the, the next person in line is the, right, whoever the vice chair is moves in, moves into the chair position. And the vice chair that gets elected is the one that's been in, on the commission the longest without having served as chair or vice chair. So in this case, the vice chair is Commissioner Schopert. And the, the person that's been here the longest without serving is Commissioner Aldo.
I move to make him vice chair.
Can we elect him to vice chair if he's not here?
That's a good question, actually.
I think we can. It's been done, it's been done in the past. Unless you, do you have anything that says he doesn't want to do it? Has he contacted you?
No, I think he, he's...
No, I haven't heard anything from him.
There you go. Congratulations.
I move for him to be the vice chair and...
Right. Go ahead. Make a motion.
And for, Jeff to be the next chair.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Now we do go into the board, planning commission liaisons to the board. So in December, I've got three different sections of our design review board obligation. I, three volunteers for the first DRB meetings in January and February. I have Commissioner Lubomirsky that volunteered for those. For the March and April meetings, I have Commissioner Davidson that volunteered for that. For the November and December meetings, I have Commissioner Lockren that volunteered for that. And I think those are the only three that I, I recall getting. So now we just have the, the three remaining, May, June, July, August, and September, October. So taking names.
My, my seat is up in June, I believe. And I'm, and I'm going to let someone else fill it. And the purpose of being a liaison is so you can report back to the commission what happens at these meetings. So I think it would be best for my, for me to take the September and October slot, and then my successor would, would be able to fill that.
I got you down.
So for, for me, what did I say, the July and August?
Okay. So that leaves, so that would be Commissioner Mercado then? That would be, okay.
Yeah. It's a bad meeting not to come to.
Okay. So finishing up, I just want to, the only thing I want to bring up is that we do have the DRB meeting in, on January 22nd. So Commissioner Lubomirsky will need to attend that one. And that one will be just, it's one item, it's Schaefer. And then I do want to mention that the next planning commission meeting is January 28th. And we have the 190 Mill Street project coming back. And we also have BioMarin, the project with Finale Air coming back. And that's it.
Can I ask about the calendar for the planning commission? It, it seems like there, am I wrong, there are some dates here that are not the second Tuesday, February 11, June 9, May, May 12. Is there, is there, is there a reason they are not on the second and fourth, or second, yeah?
Typically, if they're not on the normal Tuesday, it is when there is a, a holiday. So that's possible that the February 11th one is not...
Or if the month starts with a Tuesday, because there's something about we have to meet on the Tuesday following the city council. And if the city council doesn't meet, because there's, it doesn't start the Monday.
That's, that's true.
These dates still look a little funky.
I can, I can double check those.
Okay. If you would, that would be helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any commission communications? Okay. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.